Are you still bringing the gentleman from ADH?
Yes.
Okay. There is a gentleman coming, he's on the Arkansas Department of Health, to talk to us about septic tanks and impact or whatever because of the STRs. Okay? You won't want to miss that. So I encourage you to come to the work session on the 27th. It's here, and it's at 5:30. Okay? Then a week later, we have the regular sessions such as the one we're going to have tonight. So if you're thinking of speaking tonight, you may want to hold off until you've had the opportunity to read what the new ordinance is going to say, so that you can comment. I can guarantee you that we all understand the emotions of both sides and what's happening. We had 31 people talk last month, which is great. We got a lot of information. But I just wanted to bring you up to date on what's happening before we start the meeting tonight. So you won't hear anything about the short-term rules on the agenda. We're doing other amazing stuff such as getting IT equipment for the new police building and all sorts of other wonderful things. All righty? Okay. It's just about 6:30, so we'll get started. Good evening once again. I recall the order, the regular meeting of the Bella Vista City Council. If you'd kindly rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do the roll call of council. Councilmember Snow?
Here.
Councilmember Wozniak?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
Fowler?
Here.
Burke?
Present.
Wilms?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Before we move into citizen input, I would ask that you join us in just a moment of silence for a friend of many of us, Don Robinson. Don had been a member of the Planning Commission since its inception in 2007. He had to leave the Planning Commission because of health reasons a few months ago, and unfortunately, he passed away over the weekend. So if you could just reflect for a few moments, and then we'll continue. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to citizen input.
I'm sorry. Let me turn this off.
Okay. Mark? And you're on Buckingham Drive, Mark?
Yeah, Mark, Warsaw, 5 Buckingham Drive. I know you just had the conversations in the STRs. We had several conversations about this. I was able to watch the working session, and I was just appalled about the conversation there. My personal opinion with that, it was so out of control, it was beyond belief. I think the STRs and the septic issue need to be moved to January when there's a new mayor in place. Okay? I think it's the best thing to do right now. Doug, you came completely unhinged. I mean, it was crazy.
Is he allowed to dress specifically?
You spent 50 minutes screaming at everybody. Nobody got any insight in. You have other individuals here that have input. It was uncalled for. It was completely uncalled for. I know you mean good, but the way you came up was ridiculous.
Okay, Mark.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Ellen Creekbaum?
Ellen Creekbaum, 50 Churchill Drive. You were all voted into office by the residents of Bella Vista, as our representatives. Supporting the residents is your number-one priority. There must be short-term rental regulation through an ordinance put into place ASAP. We're behind. Fayetteville has it, Hot Springs has them, Eureka Springs has them, and most other cities in the country have ordinances already. And so we are still the wild, wild west. And now, you've kicked the can down the road, because I thought this was going to come to the city council tonight. Sending out emails, I've spent a lot of time and energy on it. But I'm still going to make my points for you to consider as you start working on this ordinance again. So here are five recommendations. Give temporary operating permits for a fee to the 435 short-term rentals currently in operation, and don't allow any new permits or ordinance until the ordinance is in place. Use the marketing technology that's available to determine how many hotel rooms or short-term rental beds the city actually needs. There's a way to figure that out. Use this number to place a cap on the number of permits given so the residents aren't overrun in the neighborhoods. The cap will also keep business owners' occupancy rates good, because if there's too many, then their occupancy rates are bad. Eureka Springs has a cap. Set caps on specific streets so no one property is surrounded by short-term rentals or become the only permanent resident on a street. Evaluate if this will impact townhomes, condos, Vatican I and II, and the Plaza. Then build a hotel in areas uncommercial and take advantage of the VRBO Airbnb business in our residential neighborhoods and take the pressure off of it, where people work and children play. We must ask ourselves, who are we? Is Bella Vista a place to retire? Is it a place to raise children? I've heard both. Or is it the place to rent a party house? I've heard Airbnb says no parties. But what is a party? Is there a definition? Is it a lot of people? Is it noise level? Is it alcohol? What defines a party? Bella Vista's motto, is Bella Vista a place to call home? Families have been able to afford homes here, and now that is all changing with people buying their property. So be honest. If the decision has been made to officially rebrand Bella Vista into a hospitality community, trail town USA, a place to escape to, a place to have a successful vacation in, then let the residents know. Let us decide then, do we want to escape from the retirement bedroom community that we bought into? Or into the Bella Vista resort that it may become? Or escape from Bella Vista entirely? The current advertising and promotion of Bella Vista, okay. In light of the current questionable tactic pulled by city council tonight, it is incumbent on you to pass an emergency ordinance now, freezing the number of short-term rentals in the current level until an ordinance is passed. This shouldn't be a concern, as you promised the ordinance would be in place in a timely manner. So freeze it now. Otherwise, it's going to double by January again. It doubled in a year before. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ellen. Okay, time for council reply. Who wants to go?
I will. Yeah, kind of stunned by the comments, quite frankly. Don't know whether to address them specifically or not. I would ask that anyone that heard those comments, go back and watch the work council video that's online. As comments were made, at least a couple of the people that made comments, probably from the STR side, wanted to know if I would, well, I'm sorry, during the public comment, not from the work session. Well, yeah, from the work session. A couple of people have made public comment during the last city council meeting, of which I was not able to be here. They wanted to know if I would see or hear the comments. And my answer was that during the work session last Monday. It was like, yes, I did. I watched the whole entire thing. When we met at the work session, what I did, or what I wanted to do, was take people through the thought process. What initiated, generated the organization and the conversation around short-term ordinance? All the steps that we had gone through in putting that ordinance together? The work that had been done, addressing some of the points that were in the ordinance, like I said, and why they were in the ordinance? That was my whole effort. And obviously, whenever you do something like that, you may have someone or some other people on the council that might want to push back, which is absolutely fine. I have no problem with that whatsoever. The original ordinance that was put together, any city council member can make an amendment to that ordinance at their discretion if they would like. And my point at the very end of that conversation was, you can make any amendment that you want to make. That's up to you. You know, after you do your homework, and you study, and you talk to people, you're allowed, and you can even propose an opposing ordinance or a different ordinance if you would like. You can do whatever you want to do. I was prepared tonight to basically reiterate the points that I made last Monday night. I think I will probably hold on to those for now. And when we reintroduce our new ordinance next month in August, and it will be introduced, and we are going to have the conversation, the council at that time, as a body, can decide to do whatever it is they want to do. If they decide they want to table that, well, they can do that. Or if we want to decide that's going to be the first reading, that could be the first reading, and then we can go through the subsequent two. And any amendments that anybody wants to propose, they are more than welcome to do that. So I don't know how I could have offended anybody in trying to present, like I said, the whole entire process that we've been going through, myself and the people in CDS. There were a lot of comments made about, people didn't know what they were doing. Or I won't say, I don't want to put words in people's mouth, but like questioning capability, things like that, and the research that has been done. And I would just like to say, I'm not even speaking on my behalf, but I want to speak on behalf of the people that I work with, I hold in highest regard. Their educational backgrounds are in planning. Their profession in cities they worked in prior to coming here are in planning. They're very smart, they're very energetic. They know and they understand planning and everything that goes along with it. And so I just want to say, I hold them in the most highest regard. And it's been a pleasure working with them. And we have been working on this for like a year. And we have had a public meeting. 90% of the people that came to that public meeting said that they wanted an STR ordinance. We had a public input session at the Planning Commission meeting, which by the way, no one showed up. Many, many emails, many, many phone calls. A lot of the emails were incredibly detailed. I met with two STR owners prior to the introduction of the ordinance to see and get their feedback on it. And by and large, there really were no issues. Maybe on the occupancy piece, there's maybe a couple of issues. CDS met with Fayetteville, which was referenced during the public comment session a month ago. CDS has spoke with Eureka Springs. And if anybody's been paying any attention, you know that they are no longer allowing additional STRs in the city. As a matter of fact, they'd like to take the number down. I listened to 30 speakers at the public input session. And then I've reviewed, and so has planning staff, many ordinances across the country. And by the way, this is not just a subject that's relevant to us. This is going on all across the country. But anyway, I'm not going to go through a lot of what I was going to go through tonight. I will save it for next month. If I offended anybody, apologize. It was not my intent. I just wanted everyone to know holistically how all of this conversation unfolded. And by the way, one last thing. I'm actually the chair of the Bella Vista Advertising Promotion Commission, Discover Bella Vista. Oh, by the way, we're really, really proud of our work. And we promote tourism to Bella Vista. That includes restaurants and STRs. Okay? And there's no intent to eliminate or do away with STRs in Bella Vista at all. The noise was growing louder with complaints. And it was my position that we needed to try to do something to get our arms around this situation. It was going to blow up on the city and threaten that business model in this city. So the effort was really to try to help STR owners, not hurt them. Okay? And there were actually two ordinances proposed at the city council meeting last month. The first of which addressed our zoning districts, R1, R2, R3, C1, C2, C3, et cetera. And what would happen is that STRs are not defined as an accepted use in those zones right now, currently. Pass that ordinance, and it makes accepted use of STRs in those zones. Okay? Automatically, without a conditional use permit being required. Which that was one of the things that was mentioned during public comment last week, that we shouldn't make it a conditional use. Well, it wasn't going to be. So I'm supportive of STRs. But we've got to get our arms around the situation. And it's just like Jeremy said from Bend, Oregon last week. Not only are people and residents in Bella Vista upset because of how their daily lives have been affected, but we also have to think about our citizen community in Bella Vista and how it's going to disrupt our neighborhoods. You're not going to know your neighbors any longer. And these STRs, they're coming, and they're coming fast. We have 435 right now that we know of. There's another company that says we have 470. Last week, we had 431. Prior to that number, we had 411. And the first number we got was 366. So they're coming, and they're coming fast, and they're going to continue to come. Don't want to be unwelcoming, but we have to address the issue and get our arms around it. So I'm going to say enough about that. And we'll talk more about the ordinance next month at the August meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? John?
I'll just be brief. You know, as far as Doug's concerned, he's a very hard-working councilman and always works in good faith. He's taken on a tough issue. It's a very emotional issue. These people feel strongly on both sides. And so I think we need to just relax and depersonalize it. It's hard enough to wrestle with the issue without trying to bring personalities into it. But I do want to point out that we had delayed the issue until October. And Doug mentioned, he's the one that brought up, hey, I don't think we should wait till October. So I'm going to bring a new draft out in August. So if you want something done about STRs, he actually was trying to speed it up. So I just want to point that out. And on the issue in general, you know, it's just a tough one. We're going to have to work through it. We want to do something that's smart and appropriate.
Okay, anyone else?
Just a side comment. We do not currently have in Bella Vista a hotel or housing accommodation like that. Sadly, we don't. It's not been facilitated on any of the Cooper-owned properties, such as Town Center West, which is vacant at the present time. There's other lands that might be available that Cooper owns that could accommodate a housing unit, like a hotel. So we're deficient in that area, as you all know, or should know. Vacation Rentals was an existing operation for many, many years, and they, I think, recently closed down, partly because of the STRs, the short-term rentals. In any event, the houses rented in neighborhoods kind of like what we see now, but under a different program. And those were short-term, most of them. Some were long-term. I had a house across the street from us that had a long-term rental for a number of months because of a job placement. So it is an alternative form of housing for people who come to visit here. Most of them come here because of the trails. There are other drawings for Northwest Arkansas that makes Bella Vista desirable. But that's one of them.
Anybody else?
I do have one last thing.
Okay.
You know, I just want to say, my phone and my email, and this is a topic, I mean, I've been inundated, probably a lot of us have, I don't know. But I try to be very accommodating to residents of this community and responsive. For someone not to call me if they have an issue and have a conversation first, and you can still come up, stand up and make public comment if you would like to do, if that's what you want to do. But you can call me and talk to me and tell me you have an issue with something I said, or did, or proposed, or whatever. And we can have that conversation. But just to show up and blast somebody and throw a scud like that, I don't think it's appropriate. It's not anything I would ever do. That's it.
Okay, thank you. All righty, we'll move along to approval of minutes. You received in your package the regular meeting, June 27th minutes. Are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's a motion by Mr. Burke and seconded by Mr. Flynn.
All right. Roll call vote. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Kerry.
Thank you. Finance Director Hall also issued the June financials. Again, for those of you that don't know, there's always a delay because for some inexplicable reason, it takes the state two months to be able to tell us, although they're able to announce their own in the month in which they receive. Anyway. I'm pleased to tell you that in cash or cash equivalents, we have $13 million in the bank. Our liabilities are $402,000. So we're in a very good stead there. And we're underrunning on the budget, and we're overrunning on revenue. The, I'm sorry?
Always good.
Yes, always good. But some of the $13 million will come down because we're spending 3.6 on painting this year or resurfacing. But nevertheless, we're still in a very healthy position. And I want to thank the members of the Street Committee for all their hard work in helping us identify the streets that need to be done. I'm also anticipating a recession. And there seem to be mixed emotions and mixed experts all over. But if there's a recession, a pothole doesn't care. If there's a recession, a fire won't start. If there's a recession, not everyone will suddenly stop calling the police and all the various other functions that the city provides for the residents. So it is my planning that we will be able to toughen out. All employees will still have a job, and we will still get the work done. And it's as simple as that. So that's why we're carrying a very large cash balance at the moment, and we'll carry it into the new year, so that the new council and mayor will have a goodly amount as well. Because there are things that are going to have to be addressed. And I hope that we do not hit a recession. But I heard this morning on the news, some people actually think that we're in it now. So I'll keep accumulating the money, and I'll keep reporting to you every month. But financially, we are in excellent shape.
Peter, I had a question about that. You know, because of the delay, I wasn't sure I was reading that right. But it looked to me like the sales tax receipts, both city and county, were flattening out a bit, meaning they were pretty much the same as last year, whereas we've been kind of hitting a 10%, 15% increase pretty regularly.
That's true. And if anybody would like a copy of the financials, we're happy to supply them. But what you're saying is actually correct. We saw a huge jump with the internet sales tax. And it carried on through COVID because people were preferring to buy online. That's now beginning to flatten out. I think a lot of it has to do with the rise in interest rates and other things such as people needed to get out and go shopping, if nothing for the social interaction with other people. But yes, although we're still over budget on our revenue, which is good. Anyone else? Mr. Snow?
Mayor, do, what are our housing permits, or new building permits now?
Doug, what's the latest number? I haven't seen July, or excuse me, June yet.
Mayor, I don't have to toe them off the top of my head if I can get it.
Okay.
I don't know if we're up or down, or?
Oh, we're up.
Still up on the building permits.
Yep. And I just saw it here, local permits and fees are over the budget by $189,000. So the building is still going on. Anyone else? Okay, I entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Flynn and Mr. Wilms. Excuse me, Mr. Snow and Mr. Wilms.
All right. Roll call vote again. Councilmember Wilms?
Aye.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Kerry.
Okay, we have two pieces of old business. The first is an ordinance amending Section 107, 317, Access Management of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to provide clarification regarding access drive distance from intersections and for other purposes. That was the third and last reading. Mr. Wilms, I understand that you have an amendment.
I do, Mr. Mayor. In order to implement this in a more timely fashion, I'm proposing that, as presented at the work session, I'm proposing that we amend this ordinance to incorporate the emergency cost provision, which will allow it to be implemented in a more timely basis. We've gone through the full three readings, giving it time. We've not received really, I don't think, any negative or change comments back. The Planning Department is considering perhaps some additional changes, but that is not going to affect moving ahead with this proposal.
I would second that.
Okay. I have a motion from Mr. Wilms and from Mr. Flynn. Is there any further discussion?
And it's reflected on your handout that you should have. Ready for vote?
Okay. And you're voting on suspending the rules?
No.
Well, the arguments are for the emergency clause.
No. We're voting to amend the proposal to add
The emergency clause.
An emergency clause. Okay. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Kerry, six, zero.
Okay. I'll now read.
But you've already read the third. You've already read your third and final. Your own third and final reading, so final debate at this time.
Okay. Anyone? I entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Snow, is that you?
No, Wilms.
Okay, Chief, and Mr. Wilms.
All right. Roll call vote again. Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Kerry, six, zero. Mayor, we need to, not to confuse matters, but now we need to have a motion and a second to approve the emergency clause right now.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Flynn and Mr. Fowler?
All right.
Any discussion? Wayne?
Okay. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Kerry, six, zero.
Okay, the next piece of business is a resolution renaming Mole Lane to Mack Lane. We tabled this in June. And we had asked the CDS and the petitioners to contact all the owners on the street, including one renter as well, to see if they had any objection to changing the name. Because whenever you change the name, then you've got to change all your credit cards and everything else that goes with it. And they were able to contact the last person out in California. And I believe all of you got the actual sign-off from CDS, and no one has objected. Is there any further discussion? Okay. I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve the name change from Mole Lane to Mack Lane, as requested.
Mr. Wilms, second?
Second.
Mr. Flynn?
All right. Roll call vote. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Kerry, six, zero.
Okay, now move into new business. We have four pieces, three resolutions and one ordinance. The first is a resolution amending the 2022 city budget to appropriate $177,622.50 in revenue from the State Full-Time Law Enforcement Officer Salary Stipend Act of 2022 to all police departments to fund a one-time $5,000 stipend police departments to fund a one-time $5,000 stipend for all police department full-time law enforcement officers. We don't have the money yet, but you're seeing that a lot of cities are now passing similar resolutions, because it is our understanding that we will get the money before our August meeting, and we want to make sure that we're able to get these funds in the hands of the police officers as quickly as possible. Is there any discussion?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The dispatchers are important part of the police department, and in fact, be very difficult for the officers to work without the dispatcher. So is there any way that we can provide them with some type of a stiffen, maybe not as much as the officers are getting, but, and something to show their appreciation for the job that they provide?
That's something you could investigate and bring to council in August. Sure, you want to speak to the chief? Anyone else?
These monies, Mayor, those are monies that come to us from the state, so it's not a local expenditure, it doesn't come out of our budget.
That is correct.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, Mr. Flynn?
Second.
Mr. Flynn.
All right, roll call vote again. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Howard Technology Solutions through a state procurement contract in an amount not to exceed $270,000 for the purchase of audiovisual equipment for the new public safety building. This amount is being paid for inside the bond. Are there any questions at all for Chief? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Okay, who is the move?
Jury. Jury.
Okay, it's Mr. Snow and Chief.
All right, roll call vote again. Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Blue Guys IT through a state procurement contract in the amount, in a total amount of $106,443 for the purchase of Total Security Solution to enhance city cybersecurity efforts. This is part of the $300,000 that IT had requested through the ARP funding, which was approved by council. This is, if I remember, it's an 18-month contract, and yes, it's 18-month in duration, and this will strengthen greatly our ability to keep the cyber hackers away from us. We're already in great shape, but this will enhance it even more. Are there any questions at all?
Move to be approved. Second.
Mr. Snow and Chief.
All right, roll call vote. Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
The last is an ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Bulldog Security LLC in an amount not to exceed $180,000 for the purchase of access control equipment for the new public safety building, and amending the 2022 city budget to appropriate $180,000 in otherwise unappropriated and undesignated funds to the capital budget for the project. Staffers are also requesting a third and final reading. Is there any discussion at all?
So are these ARP funds on this particular matter?
Well, the ARP funds have now just been rolled into the general fund, because if you remember, we made a conscious decision to use them, okay?
But I mean, technically, I mean?
Technically, yeah, but it's?
On technically, I guess.
It's an O.S.
It's an O.S.
I would like to comment, I appreciated the special little section that Kim had, totally enough what we'd spent out of that at the end of her financial presentation. Yeah, it was very helpful.
Anyone else?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules, move third and final.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fowler, Mr. Flynn.
All right, vote on suspending the rules. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Okay, third reading of the ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Bulldog Security LLC in an amount not to exceed $180,000 for the purchase of access control equipment for the new public safety building, and amending the 2022 city budget to appropriate $180,000 in otherwise unappropriated and undesignated funds to the capital budget for this project. Is there any further discussion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Did you want to move the third and final?
Yes.
We did. I'm sorry.
No, we did that. That was Williams and who sent it?
Wozniak.
Uh, Chief.
Woz, okay, excuse me. All right, roll call vote again. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Meetings and announcements, the next city council work session will be Monday, August the 22nd at 5:30 here in the courtroom. The next regular meeting of the city council will be Monday, August 29th, here in the courtroom at 6:30. The Planning Commission work session will be July 28th, that's this week, at 4:30 here in court. The Planning Commission regular meeting will be August the 8th at 4:30 here in the courthouse. And if needed, the Board of Construction Appeals will be held on August the 9th, 2022. That's it, we are adjourned. Thank you for being here this evening.